All right, I'll call the order, the town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for February twelfth, twenty twenty five. Welcome aboard. Don't have anybody on Zoom yet. So I don't have to get my Zoom spiel. Hopefully, everybody else in the room knows the knows the routine. But um. Let's get right into it. First item tonight on the well, make introductions, let me back up and not get ahead of myself. William Hanley and Chair, we've got Tracy Loftus Keller as Vice Chair, we've got Ann Dalton is a regular Planning Board. Member, we've got. Daniel Burke as an alternate member, we've got a regular member Gail Marshall and Alan Kimberly, also a regular member, so.
Or irregular.
You're 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 regular. So here we are, and that's tonight, we've got two items on the agenda and. Second item on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes and we had the minutes from the twenty seconds.
So.
Second. Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Here we go, minutes are approved. All right. Rolling on through our agenda. We've got item number three tonight. Public hearing. And is it six oh five yet?
Yeah.
Not yet. It's supposed to start at six oh five. And. What's starting at six oh five is the land use zoning ordinance amendments for the twenty twenty five. Annual Town Meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty five, and again, it's in public hearing for that. We've got two minutes.
The board's deadline is for recommended land use changes. This meeting, next meeting, when when did that go?
So there won't be any new land use changes between that one, we've already talked about one, but there won't be any new things that are beyond what we're going to talk about tonight between now.
Questions I may put not carry forward this town meeting.
Any new suggestions, if they have edits, then we can look at, there is a public hearing on the twenty seven six.
So these items have been made.
I think they'll vote on them, some of them tonight, and then one of them.
Twenty six, February, May sixth.
Unless you have something that's very shattering that we mess up off.
Guess we're up. Guess we'll find out.
There's only six. Actually. For you guys, it was only. Three or four.
Everybody, how much snow are we getting tomorrow? Don't know, don't care.
Ice burst.
Ice burst.
Yeah.
Snow first, ice liquor.
Snow freezing, rain asleep before one, then rain asleep between one and three, then rain like at three.
All right, six oh five. We were at the public hearing, we can land use amendments for the town meeting, May. Noel, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is our time to discuss proposed warrant articles for this year's town meeting related to the land use ordinance. Maybe the way that we've done this in the past is I just talk about the one that we're gonna do, and then you can either. Decide to vote to have that be presented as part of the. As a want to, you vote to.
You present one, we discuss it, if there is any discussion, and then we vote to. Then we vote to make the recommendation to the warrant committee or.
Under the select board.
Select board.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it gets reflected in town meeting that the planning board.
Approved.
Passage and then, yeah, the select board will not vote on what you guys do here.
All right.
That's being presented.
We recommend passage to the Board of Select.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it's an end of the town.
End of the town.
It appears in the warrant.
Yes.
Really good town.
Okay.
And then the warrant committee would do the same thing.
Got it.
All right. Okay, so the first one, and we've talked about this last planning board meeting, I think, is a proposed change to the land use ordinance that. Clarifies under footnote G of sections three point five that. The Shoreland Commercial District. Primary residential uses in the Shoreland Commercial District. Must meet the neighboring Shoreland Residential District standards. So I think this was sort of triggered by an implication you had before you at one point, and there was a little confusion about. Whether or not you could use an upland, adjacent upland district or Shoreland district, but we're, the policy has been always Shoreland District. And we're just clarifying that.
Okay. We are in. The public hearing. Is any public comment? Please comment. See, I'm the one member of the public here tonight.
No comments from him.
No comments. Any discussion in the board?
Nope.
Do you want, you want to do article by article to a motion?
I think we'll do article by article that way.
I move we recommend passage of. Warrant, it's warrant article XX of the amendment to section three, section three point five dimensional requirements for districts.
Second thought. Right, all those in favor? Well, at least. All right, next.
Okay, now I apologize in advance that I don't have the warrant article numbers, so I don't know if they're. Claire's put their name, so and they're. Not there. So the next one is a change to section seven point five procedures to administer permits specifically related to certificates of occupancy. If you recall, last year, we made some changes to the ordinance by bringing over some of the standards from the town's. Building code, which is in. A code that you're actually using and put some of them into the land disorderness. And this change specifies when certificates of occupancy are required, and we put in a specific date. Which is March third nineteen ninety eight. That built the structures. After that date require a certificate of occupancy. So this is kind of a cleanup from us cleaning up the town's building code.
Clean up, but they clean up.
Being a public cleanup. Yep. Any questions?
Okay.
I move we recommend. Passage of the amendment to section seven code enforcement officer seven point five procedure for administrative permits. Point six certificate of occupancy.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Great, incidentally, since we're having your public hearing, this is not one you need to vote on, but we are actually repealing the town's building code. Ordinance this year at twenty one, but that's just a straight up appeal of the building code. So. Just wanted to bring that up.
Got it.
The next warrant article.
Because it's been eclipsed by state law.
Yes, it has been eclipsed by state law, and we actually took the some of the standards that were relevant and put them in the land use ordinance last year, and we just never repealed.
If you want further. The town, I mean, the state of Maine adopted the main uniform building and energy code in two thousand nineteen. And it stated that if any other town or city had their own building code. That it's no longer valid because you have to adopt the main uniform building and energy codes. So hence the reason why we have to boot, get rid of our building code. Because it's a statewide code.
Great. All right, the next one, our changes to the land use ordinance specifically six B twelve and six B fourteen and some definitions. Related to manufactured homes, and this was. Really precipitated by the. Recent legislative changes to manufactured homes and the new state law which requires that any lot. That has. A manufactured home that allows a single family residence has to also allow a manufactured home. And the term that that we're really talking about mobile homes in this situation, so we need to to make a few tweaks to the ordinance. To make that consistent with current state laws, and so the first one, six B twelve. Is actually this the place in your land disordnis where you deal with manufactured homes? And there's a certain set of standards, and there's some standards in there related to 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 mobile homes. And we basically kind of deleted that standard, and we're kind of holding it as a placeholder at this point. And then referring to the state law, and then. Not to jump around too much, but on that specific section. Through the land use committee and through the planning board next year, we're going to be talking more about, okay, are there standards that we'd want to bring in from state law for mobile home parks and some other things, and it all kind of ties into. Subdivision ordinance review and some other things that we're going to be working on, so right now. We've made a tweak to the ordinance to make it consistent, still more talking to do. And then under sixty fourteen, that is the provision in your ordinance that allows Kim to issue a permit for a temporary. For recreational vehicle to be used for temporary living while you're building, but building a structure, but for only ninety days. So we had to make tweaks there because we're not using the same terms anymore. And then we also added. Basically, the definition of manufactured homes that's in state law. We made a tweak last year, but we added some language to it to be more consistent. And then I also added manufactured homes to the definition dwelling unit. And changed the mobile home lot. On mobile home park definition to be consistent with state law. So. Long story short, we need to the ordinance to be more consistent with the state's law. And then.
A comment from the public? Comments? Discussion?
I move we recommend passage of the amendments to section six, six B, six B twelve, six B fourteen, and eight. Regarding manufactured mobile homes, manufacturing homes and recreational vehicles.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that was an aye from me.
Oh, aye.
Yep.
Great, another one that we're doing is not for planning board voting, but just the public meeting notification, but the town does have a mobile home and trailer park ordinance, which was adopted in nineteen seventy. And that is not consistent with the current state ordinance, and we need to repeal it, so there is going to be a warrant. Article to repeal in nineteen seventy.
Can I go back and ask the question about adoption of MUBAC?
Sure.
Cam?
Yep.
So as, so if that passes at the. The town meeting, then we get rid of our. Reference to LS one oh one, and we're adopting.
And N F D A is in our ordinance.
And NF P, that's.
One oh one by state D is in our ordinance.
So that stays.
So that's still, it's it's state, that's adopted too by the state, but we have it in our language and the land disorder ordinance of that as well as being.
Are we gonna have to go and do like all the res check and blow?
You have to do that now.
Where do you have to do that now?
You have to do that for any construction. Any renovation, it's a statewide code, the town, it doesn't, some towns don't enforce it at the local level because we don't meet the criteria to enforce it at the local level. But the homeowners and contractors should still hire third party inspectors to look at MUBAC compliance because it's not being done at a local level in Mount Desert, it's not.
But where's where's the authoritative body that's determining?
It's in the statutes. Main advice statute, and also we'll give the statewide.
If they don't do blower dip, door test, if they don't do blower door testing, what's?
You have to, it's in, it's, that was the, that was an amendment to the two thousand fifteen code, so you have to do blower door tests.
But what? So if you have to, and it's not being enforced on the local level, where's?
Banks and insurance companies are looking for that compliance.
They're the.
Yep.
Got it.
Hello.
All right, thanks.
Oh, Lily, can I get you to sign?
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, time issue. So the last one. I would request that the planning board not vote on, but I wanted to update the board, last meeting, we talked about. The standards that we're gonna add, hopefully add to the ordinance related to solar energy systems. And so I talked with some folks at the sustainability committee meeting about it, because this is their initiative, and one thing that they brought up was some concern about the height requirements, so. The way that the current draft is written is that roof mounted solar energy systems. Are basically exempt from height, sort of like a chimney or antenna. There is a concern that by exempting it, we're going to start to get into view sheds, particularly along the shoreline. If you have to elevate your. Roof mounted solar energy system, your solar panel. Higher than what the what the height requirement is, so. We're currently in the process of making some tweaks to that. So that's. More than likely, it will be the solar panel can't, you know, go above the height requirement or. Like, should be in line with the plane, the highest point of the roof or something. And then I think Gail mentioned yesterday, when we were talking about the warrant committee, that. That we may want to consider some. Provision. To make that like a conditional use approval. Is something. A condition we support, we just haven't figured it out yet, so between now and. Next week, we're gonna have a new draft.
Got it.
So I, you want me to go over solar energy systems for anybody who wasn't at the last meeting, or just wait until we get to the public hearing next time?
It has to vote for waiting until we get that ironed out.
Yeah. Great.
You may have people want to comment.
You only one shot.
Yeah.
So you can't change it at the next meeting, so you might want him to run through.
Yes.
This ordinance, because the only thing that you're looking to change is maybe height. You should listen to it now.
Well, I haven't made the change yet.
Well, I'm just saying that.
But generally, it's gonna be not to have the solar panel go beyond the highest point of the roof and shouldn't extend beyond the height.
Yeah. I think someone on the board brought up the question last time, if there's ever a cap like on max height for the. The structures that are exempt from high requirements.
Yeah, there isn't.
Yeah.
For those structures and the 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 model that was used, and many other examples of this particular. Language, you know, it's the same, like roof mounted solar energy systems are typically exempted from heights, just like.
Like a chimney.
Just like a chimney, but. I think it's a valid point that was brought up, but you might have gotten brought it up, yeah, like. These aren't, you know, just like chimneys to me there, so.
No, I think that's a great change or.
Yeah.
I mean, our, I think our, everybody's impression, when you think of roof mounted solar is a flush mounted.
In meaning.
System, unless you're on a flat roof like. The schools or something like that, which. Which I think we ought to be able to at least do a condition, you know, if you have concerns about stuff like that, we are at least have a a conditional use. Process, so that something like that, it would might not be stymied simply by. Just plain language about what can or can't be allowed. Because there may not be re, view shade issues, I mean, there'll be lots of things, you wouldn't want to necessarily prevent that sort of thing in those circumstances. But otherwise, it seems to make. Some sense to consider the possibility that you don't want big systems.
Of course.
On roofs.
You have a billboard down the top.
Yes, yes.
Edge of your house.
Yeah, lights for planes to not.
Yeah, it's an interesting change, you know, the, just trying to work through the. Process of. Condition we used to prove for the scenario versus the easier solution is to say you can't do this, but I think it's a valid point, now there are some buildings where you might want. Solar panels like the high school. But they're too high. Which I don't think high school is, but, you know, then then, and there's no other reason not to be able to allow, there might be a safety valve. Which is the planning board to make that decision, now we're just trying to, now I'm just trying to figure out. Okay, by what standard are you going to judge that decision? So it's not super subjective.
Well, if you add that to our to do list, you gotta take fences and chickens. Give it to somebody else.
No, we can revisit that, but fences, I think we.
We all need eggs.
Yes.
Yep, but we've all been there with the with the. The chickens one.
If you want me to go through this ordinance though?
Yeah, I mean, it's the same ordinance as the last meeting, so basically it creates three. Different kinds of solar energy systems, there's. Ground mounted solar, so there are two kinds. Ground mounted solar energy systems and roof mounted solar energy systems. And then there are different scales, there are like the size of the system, so there's a small scale. Medium scale, a large scale, and the scales are based on the area that they occupy, so I think. You know, small scale was like up to lots of.
Third of an acre.
It's like.
Third of an acre.
Third of an acre, and then it's a third of an acre to.
Two acres.
Two acres and then two acres. To, I don't know, a third of an acre to two acres is a medium scale, and then anything over two acres is large scale. And so then in your table of allowed uses, it, there are sections that say this is where in town these different things are allowed, so. Roof mounted solar energy systems are allowed everywhere without a permit from the code enforcement officer. Small scale ground mounted solar energy systems are allowed everywhere with a permit from the code officer. Medium scale solar energy systems are allowed. In certain districts, like rural woodland and the larger zoning districts. Residential one and two, I think, in Shoreland. In Shoreland. And those are conditional use approval, and then large scale solar energy systems are not allowed anywhere in town. So those are those big, more industrial scale. And then there's a set of standards for all solar energy systems to to meet, including in the ground mounted solar energy systems to have a height limitation of twenty two feet. And then there's some setbacks and lot coverage considerations in that. And then there's. For for the conditional use approval on the medium scale, there's. Additional requirements, sort of more specificity in this ordinance and what other like conditional use applications. Might you bring you, but these are the things that we're looking for when you come in. And then there's a set of standards associated with that, that you can use to review. Those applications. And then there's also, we spent a little bit of time thinking about what happens if it's the, you need to remove it or it gets abandoned. There were some standards in there that applied to that as well. And then obviously definitions.
All right, well, since we are in a public hearing, I'll ask for any public comment about the. Proposed amendments or addition of the solar ordinance to the land use zoning ordinance.
Yeah, and I don't know if I missed anything, Gail, but I mean, Gail and Kimberly involved a lot in the land use committee, so. I think that pretty much covers it.
I have one thing, I have one thing that I'm just seeing right here. All solar energy systems that have reached the end of the useful life have been abandoned consistent with sort of should be removed. Would we consider roof mounted, you know, flush mounted solar panels that aren't working anymore? To be. In need of of being removed within a certain period of time as ground mounted, is it? Is it the waste, is the nature of the waste issue that we'd be concerned about?
I think that was the genesis of it, yes.
All right.
Now, that being said, we could add the term round all ground mounted solar energy systems, probably the roof mounted, if that's the will of the town.
I I guess the question is, what is, what are we trying to accomplish? And. What we're trying to accomplish is not leaving a bunch of big. Sort of quasi industrial looking structures. In residential areas. When they're not. Productive anymore, they're not doing anything anymore.
Yep.
And I'm not sure that. I mean, I don't want to be too specific, I keep thinking my own panels on my gray metal roof, it's like. Most, a lot of people don't notice I have panels, so that's a particular. That's the other end of the spectrum. But I'm not sure what, if that's our goal, if our goal is to to remove. A potential, what some would find a visual plight, if it's not actually doing something. Then maybe our focus ought to be on ground mounted, but I don't, I'd be happy. Be interested in what other people think.
I'm hundred percent open to suggestions on that one. I think what we ended up doing, using the model, the model, the removal language, it's really. In the model ordinances and other ordinances that we looked at, because again, like, there's a lot of ordinances out there, we don't always need to reinvent the wheel specifically, so I've used that.
Right.
But we did tweak it so that the removal. Language wasn't just specific to like a medium scale or a large scale, which it is in the in the model ordinances, so. And in those situations, I think it just applies that to all of the big biggest ones, but. I think you make a good point, maybe the the smaller roof mounted ones really aren't a big deal. If they're not being used, you know, they're old and people just haven't gotten around to replacing them.
And the other thing I'll say, I'm sorry that I'm doing this now, but. Six B. Says if the owner operator of the solar energy system fails to remove the installation within one year of abandonment of the proposed state decommissioning. The town retains the right to use all available means to to cause an abandoned hazard, so decommission a large scale ground mounted solar energy system to be removed, and we're not gonna have them.
Yep. Luckily, we have the chance to give it another.
Yes, sorry, I know, I feel bad about what I'm doing, but.
Yeah, I think the complicated one is gonna be just how to. Make the height.
Work. Yes.
And be flexible.
Let's. See what that language turns out to be.
Yeah.
All right, so. So no action on this one?
No, that's next. Right.
Any further discussion about the proposed amendments?
Did any of the change, did anything in the should go town that like a change on any of those from the last ones you sent out?
I don't think so, but I can't be sure. Do you want me to email it to you?
Yeah, if you don't mind, sure. I'll be right back.
Yep.
There are also on the website. If they're on the website, no worries. I'll get them on the website.
So that concludes the discussion and bringing the public hearing to a close. We're all set. Looks like it, so that was item three on the agenda tonight, and now we're gonna. Move on to item four on the agenda tonight, tonight we have a, and thank you Noel.
Thanks.
And item four on the agenda tonight is a conditional use approval, and it is conditional use approval application oh oh one twenty twenty five. First of the year. Owner's name is Mark. And Mark Dearfelder and Courtney Lederer, and agent is Greg Johnston, G F Johnston Associates, location is one fifteen Huntington Lane. Northeast Harbor, tax map twenty four lot one thirty two. Zone Shoreland Residential One, purpose is sections three point four and six C point seven. Marine structures, pier stocks, wharves, bridges and other structures in uses extending over or below the normal high water line or within a wetland, also known as a pier. And so we had a site inspection today at three thirty, and I guess I should probably ask if there is any conflict of interest on this one. And I'll raise my hand and say I have one as the owner, Mark and Courtney are. Clients of our architectural firm.
And I will disclose that I don't think it rises to a conflict, but my firm. Was hired to handle the closing. When the applicants purchased. Two summers ago, and I personally did the closing. But again, I don't think it's. This one, unless others feel different.
And it probably doesn't make any, I was the former general partner, the head of the property that when I sold it to Mr. Theracorder and his family, so I have the. I have a dear history tapped into my brain of what what happened way back when and how did it evolved to this point, so.
Fantastic, well, if the board needs any history in property, we've got that resource here tonight.
I move to accept your requested cues. This hearing.
Good day. Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then.
I move to nominate. I move to nominate Tracy Kelly, office to chair this hearing.
All those in favor?
Oh, me.
Opposed? Right.
And Daniel. I knew, I knew that would make Daniel a voting member for this.
All right, all those in favor?
Uh, I.
Um before we begin, I have a question for Kim. Shouldn't I have a checklist here? I don't see, I don't, just go through it. And maybe I'm just missing it. Maybe I'm not seeing, maybe you didn't see it there.
I don't bring anyone, but go ahead.
All right, so um I very first thing I'm going to do here is um talk about the uh notification. Um so this was published in the uh Ellsworth American on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. Uh legal notice went out to a butters on uh January twenty four, no, this one, hold on. Not sure that it did, but it was definitely in a public, a book notice in the islander on the twenty. Maybe then that date on that.
This one says January fifteenth.
Fifteen, fifteen, fifteenth, okay. Okay. And it went out to six abutting properties, um dated January twenty fourth. So then we'll go through our checklist. First of all, um uh there, I would just wanna yes, a site visit. So I was not able to attend site visits, but I think other people were. And who would like to give their summary?
Well, um Dale and I met with Greg at the site, and we walked down over the snow uh to observe the proposed location as well as the previous location of the pier. Um the new proposed location uh is makes a lot more sense. It's less exposed to um the corner point of the property is it um is more sheltered and the ability to come into the um lee of the land and a more stable rock um base for the uh pylon, what do you call it, the crib that will hold the dock, the deck. It's not gonna be and much to start with any of the vegetation. I think you mentioned one spurs that was going to come down.
Our understanding is that the prior dock was completely destroyed in the storm last winter. It was an old dock that was the height of which was below the current FEMA storm analysis and requirements. It it was cantilegious.
And long.
Off a lower point on the land than the proposed new site will allow. And that made it vulnerable and presumably would make it vulnerable to an onco performance at some point in the future. So that is the stated reason why the proposed new location is better across the harbor from the proposed site is a dock with two cribs um built underneath it rather than the one that's being proposed on the site for this one. And out the harbor from this is another private pier, and then you've got Clifton Dock. So it's consistent, appears to be consistent with pre-existing use of that shoreline.
And you already have a footpath going to the
Yes.
opposed here location.
That was a little hard to discern, a little snowed on ice, but we'll take.
So uh would you, would you like to get your presentation there?
Add a bit, um Greg Johnston, I'm Reverend Mark Theracold, he's here as well on Zoom. Um the dock that was destroyed, um something was lower, as we heard, um I think we talked about how we minimize what we need to do and and sort of were driven by the topography. As I said, the code made a distance, but a difference. But when we talk about how we get back to the water, um certainly, we saw all those large boulders that are over the bank. And I'd say the third part of the trifecta of why it ended there after having land that was elevated led to connect to was also then having a point to land where it finally flattened out. Um and I think that the the distance was certainly driven by that. Of course, it's a lot smaller than the precedent ones uh along the shore, only forty feet uh compared to the other ones. That was really what drove us, whereas a place that's um satisfactorily to touchdown with the with the flat stone. So um other than that, um it's here to replace the, you know, maritime structure they had on the property, and I think we minimized it to the greatest practical extent. So uh for any questions as we go along, we'll be happy to answer them.
You can do this construction by barge, right? I'm assuming but or from the shore.
Um yeah, it has to be a barge, so.
All right, um so uh would someone like to make a um motion to use a short?
I assume so.
All those in favor?
Bye bye.
Right, short form it is. And we can begin our uh process through the applications. So um this says.
Start by making the suggestions that we find the application complete.
Oh, yes, that's important.
And then we'll pause after that. If there's a motion, um give a second.
All those in favor?
No, no, but we get, we get the, we get the thing, this bill.
At the end.
Take a quarter.
And then we approve it, and that's the one we hold on.
Afterward, okay, okay. Now we discuss. It's fine, okay, we discuss. So the um application here, I'll read, I will just read through here. It says.
I'm sorry, we need to find a complete info document now. Oh, and then we need to approve it.
Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes. Sorry, I'm moving finally the application complete.
Okay.
All second.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay.
I move to approve the application.
And then we come back to.
Then we have a second.
Okay.
And then we, then we pause. Those guys all trip pavlovian train. Touch the power button, maybe.
Almost slower. So we'll start off with the um, we did always see there that part, and then the uh the face page of the application has a little um section where it describes uh the reconstructed dock we destroyed in two thousand twenty four storm with a width of five feet forty five feet wide, forty feet fixed pier with a fifty foot seasonal ramp and five by twenty six fifteen by twenty six seasonal float, total seasonal length sixty five feet and total seasonal float three hundred and ninety square feet. So our first component is uh compatibility.
When you say, have we confirmed that we're referring to an application for tax map twenty four lot one thirty two and zoning district SR one in the village of northeast harbor?
We do.
Yes, okay, thank you. Bill, Bill read that into the record.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was.
Okay. So our first uh item here is uh six A one compatibility under the general uh performance, six A general performance standards. It says that the application says the length and size is minimized by a forty foot length, which can transfer steep shore and is far less than the maximum of a hundred and fifty feet. The highest is set to be above the flood zone. Uh visual visual, I guess, that's simply one visual impact is a component. Uh says the reconstructed pier has moved north into a micro cove into the property in contrast with the prior, which was on the southern point of the shore. The pier is less visible from the water and land by by being inset into the cove. Uh proximated to other structures, the pier has been planned and proximated to a navigatable path in existing residents. The pier is also greater than the ninety feet to any other structure, and due to elevation is obscured from the intruding visually, from intrusion visually on residences on and off site. Density of development, the pier replaces a pier destroyed in the property, no increase in historic density of the parcel. Uh similar uses exist across the harbor and one parcel south of the project site. Traditional recreational boat is boat is common in this district in evidence by existing piers.
And at the, at the site, you indicated that this new dock will be rooted to the ground about fifty feet from the adjourned property line?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Um I was gonna wait till you got through that section, um where you, I don't know if you guys are gonna discuss the vote, because the title should be that it moves south, not north in there, and I can initially the original one.
Would you like to come do that now?
Yes.
It is south, right? It felt north today, but it's definitely south.
So um uh on my short form checklist, it says compatibility, I'm gonna say C application. Well, section six, six A two erosion and sedimentation control. Um says the shore is ledge and not erodible. Granite crib will be set on stone on shore. And abutment will be set. Silt fence will be installed down gradient of setting the shore side abutment stone. Uh downgrade of the setting of the shore side about button and stone. And uh it's go down to six A three highway safety replace.
What was that? C application?
Oh, oh, six A two, yes, C application. Thank you, Heidi. Uh six A three highway safety, um has to do with congestion of highways and public roads, but the but the application says replacement of piers on site will not increase traffic, in fact, reduction as the owners attempt to drive to find temporary leased space will cease. And then it says sufficient off-street parking. On site, five spaces exist for workers and residents without impacting the public way. So six A three, C application. Uh impact on town services, no new services requested. That's six A four, and also been right, C application. Uh six A five land suitability. Says the photos demonstrate that ledge is present, the ledge is suitable for the construction as evidenced by the prior pier. Raising the pier will eliminate the risk of tidal surge damage. Six A five, C application. Lighting. Uh it says um control low voltage lighting that is switched will be installed. Uh these safety lights for walking are far less than one hundred and one thousand eight hundred lumens. And so it says applicable standard net on the application, so C application. Six A seven stormwater. There's this uh section number ten for maintenance. Uh not applicable, no increase in impervious surface, which would increase runoff will occur. Decking boards are gapped for expansion and runoff characteristics remain unaltered. So um six A seven N A. Six A eight vegetation. It also N A, no clearing along a town road will occur with this project. N A. And six A nine dust and fumes, N A, construction offsite, none of the airborne toxins are produced by, none of these airborne toxics toxins are produced by this project. So six A nine N A.
I move the, I move the standards of six A have been met.
Yes.
Check it out.
All those in favor? Well, that's, that's done. And then we go to um we almost did say B. Um agriculture, this N A. Sixty two is reserved.
No airport.
Six B seven excavation, other than gravel pits or filling. It says applicable standard met. Um small excavation less than two yards required for shore abutment. Erosion control silt fence will be in place during hand excavation of shore abutment. So a six B seven C application. It's the eight fences and walls, there's none. Now. So none. So not app. So on our list, we have some other items here. Um so the the form I'm using has sign. Please make a check.
They don't match up, but the next one I have is six B twelve mineral exploration and extraction.
Yeah, no, I don't. I have it on my list here, but not on my uh form. I go straight to six uh six B sixteen, which is not on here. Um I'm gonna put it at the bottom.
And which one is that?
Sign regulation.
Sign regulation.
Okay.
Well, I could just.
No, no worries. Let's keep going.
Six B sixteen, it says not applicable. And then six B seventeen for wireless communications, which is eighteen. Wireless communications facilities. Uh then proposed N A. Design standards. Design standards.
Well, that's for the communication.
Okay, that's all right. Um and then so we're going on to animal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chickens. I'm trying to get the chickens. Okay, all right, I've got to chickens, which is. I'm trying to get the chickens, okay, all right, I've got to chickens, which is. A nineteen to that one, okay, none proposed. So actually I should say C applicant, or N A, or, um, N A.
Good night.
Next one, there is mobile food vendors, I'm not sure, oh, there they are. Mobile food vendors, N A, none proposed.
Please go hungry.
Rooming houses. None proposed, class the board. Land hotels. None proposed, so N A.
So, so I move that the provisions of six B have been met.
Second time.
Yeah, uh, and.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay. Six C, we do the shoreline. Um. Shoreland zoning standards, says, uh, applicable standard met. We don't have to do anything with. Uh, animal husbandry. And A.
Okay, so, Anna, uh, our agricultural animal husbandry is N A.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, uh, sixty-two archaeological sites, applicable standard met letter from the M H P C finding no impact on these resources. So, C application. Essential services, N A, no essential services proposed. Sixty point six parking areas, none proposed. N A, and then, um, marine and fresh water structures, performance standards. Um, there's a, uh, chart at the bottom, which says, shows a dimensional requirement and the proposed dimensions. Shall I read that? Art, or leave well enough alone?
Okay, we're not leaving it.
Okay, so.
Written on here.
Okay.
They're all below.
All right. And it says applicable standard met, one marine structure replacing historical structure onsite length only as needed to traverse the slope and height plans. For resilience to floodwaters. So, C application. Uh, sixty-nine roads and driveways. Says none proposed, N A. And. Six B. Now here it's sixty eleven. Water quality, uh, not applicable. No discharge or discharges are generated from the pier construction, any soil disturbance will employ erosion control B M P S. Uh, so, not.
Best management practices.
Yes. So, N A.
Before I make a motion on this section, could I ask you to point to me the archaeological site letter? Because I. I just, I'm probably looking, I'm sure.
That's red slide, I'm sorry.
No, that's, but there's, I mean, core letter.
I got it.
Yeah, sure, you have one, I just don't. I just don't.
Um.
No, that's, I'm a curve engineer.
I think we have, what you have is our communication out, and since we hit print, we did receive a lot of that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you. So you're gonna like attach it to the record or something? Okay, thank you. Um, so I move the, uh, provisions of six. I'm doing this right? Uh, correct, uh, uh, complete.
Check it down.
Sixteen, yeah.
Oh. Well, that's what we're gonna find in this form, but I, I, I move the finding, I move the finding, I move. That the proposals will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six C, except for applicable sections noted in the short form. And therefore the conclusion is that six C is not applicable, except for six C. Two and six C seven.
Ask question. Is this in a morning area?
It's not in the morning, it's inside the morning, yeah.
Check it down.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then. And so the, the next piece of paper I get to is any, um, conditional use.
Uh, do we need to do?
Nice standards.
Oh, I'm getting that, yes, findings, okay. Five point nine here. Yeah. All right, okay, five point nine. Um, so, uh. This says, um. Five point nine standards, the application for conditional use approval shall be approved unless the planning board determines that the applicant has failed to meet one or more of the standards of section six A and or. One or more of the applicable standards of six B or C, in all instances, the burden of proof shall be on the applicant. Who must provide evidence sufficient to warrant a finding that all the application standards have been met. In addition, in the shoreline areas, all the submission. After the submission of a complete application to the planning board, the board shall approve the application or approve it with conditions. If it makes a possible fi- positive finding based on the information presented. Um, that the proposed use, uh, five point nine point one will maintain safe and healthful conditions. And it says C application. Five point nine point two will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters, C application. Five point nine point three will adequately provide for the disposal of all, disposal of all wastewater, it's not applicable. A five point nine point four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, birds or other wildlife habitat. It says C application habitat not in vicinity of site, so C application. Five point nine point five will conserve. Shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters, C application. Five point nine point six will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan, C application. Five point nine point seven will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or marine activities in a shoreline commercial district, not applicable. Five point nine point eight will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. In compliance with the floodplain management ordinance of the town of Mount Desert amended March seventh, two thousand six, C application. And five point nine point nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, six B and six C standard met.
I move the, the, the provisions of five point nine, uh, will meet the. Have met the standards, uh, have met the standards of, the application's met the standards of five point nine. With regard to five point nine one, five point nine two, five point nine four, five point nine five, five point nine six. Five point nine eight and five point nine, five point nine nine, and the other provisions. That section are, are not applicable, applicable, sorry.
Second down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. You may be ready to vote on. Okay, proving, oh, that's certain conditions. Yes, are there any condition?
Um. Did the conditions before you go back to the beginning, kind of, per, right?
Yes, yes, so. I'm not aware of anything, because you've gotta get. Things from B and P, have you already, you, you've got that in process?
Yeah, they're busted, I've asked a couple of questions, we have Army Corps, um, I don't know that needs to be.
No, I, I'm not, they're gonna have, you're gonna have to meet their needs, too, and we don't need to condition on that.
So then, can we go back to the front and circle around and?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we need to condition it on getting those permits, because. They're gonna have to get those permits. Based on, to satisfy those agencies, right?
You ever need it before they get a permit?
From, from where? Okay.
Do we need to write, do we need to write that in at all?
Well, we can, we can.
Uh, you can just say condition that he's secure as all state federal. License.
All necessary state and federal licenses, from this. So we can make that condition if you wish, I think, they're, he's gonna have to do it anyway.
You always do.
Okay.
Right. So we're gonna say, um, applicant must.
The applicant obtains all necessary state and federal permits for the project.
Do I need to write in prior to obtaining? Yeah. And. Okay. Right. So then our application is approved.
We don't, we don't own it, but we have a motion in second.
Unless we go back and press play like. I'm. Are we, that call for vote?
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you all.
Wait, and today's. Well.
Yeah. Yeah, Greg, you, you want us to get a copy of this, so you keep.
Um, there's one in the town office already, yeah.
So, all right, so she, we've got it to the record, that's fine.
So I just, I did. Is I need to put in an application? So is this permit number, is the application number? Is this? Is this?
I don't.
I'm gonna sign it again.
So, if somebody was to read to whether that didn't come with all of us on, then they didn't have to have. It should be dimensional maximum, shouldn't it be?
Sure.
Help out anybody, you're welcome.
Oh.
Yeah. Have we ever thought about whether or not there's any way to process applications like this by simply not. Having a mass of paper and sections in the, in six B. That are simple, that are not applicable, like, like, he needs those towers and stuff like that.
Yeah, just take out, yeah.
Is there any way you could, maybe wanna think about doing that?
Well, that, that, that occasion is begun, and it has been asked for many years. We got it, yes.
Oh, thank you, everybody.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi.
Okay. So we have, uh, other on here, does anybody have an other to discuss?
Nope.
Okay, the next one, which is, uh, six says adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn. All second.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah.